All right, let's go ahead and call the November Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Good morning. Thank you all for joining us for the Board of Commissioners meeting. We are broadcasting this meeting live on a virtual platform. For your reference, all information shared today will be available online at www.nra.us in the Board of Commissioners section. We will allow for public comment near the end of today's agenda. Virtual participants will have an opportunity to raise their hands to comment. Attendees may also use the chat feature to make their comment as well, and I will share those prompt instructions again closer to that time. Additionally, we will be having a public meeting today on the budget request, and at that time, we will also take the ability for folks to make comments if they wish. So again, thank you for attending. We have a very full agenda today that includes several presentations, a public hearing, and two closed-session items. Commissioners, you will be asked to consider passage of a resolution approving the settlement agreement for the St. Paul's CNI litigation after the closed session. I would also like to acknowledge with the heavy hearts we continue to carry from the horrific events that have occurred at Young Terrace, particularly on November 3rd, where three of our residents lost their lives and several others sustained gunshot injuries, coming to the aid of those who lost their lives. Our prayers continue to be with those family members who lost loved ones and those whose lives have been altered by this tragic event. We are also mindful of the well-being of the community who witnessed the tragedy, as well as our staff members who were present as well. Ron and his staff will talk a little bit more about the aftermath of this event. At this time, I'd like to personally acknowledge the tireless work of Karen Rose, Kim Thomas, Donna Mills, Eila Smith, and Mike Clark, as well as countless others who came to the assistance of the aggrieved family members and the shaken community. I'd also like to thank the commissioners for their prayers and support during these trying times. I would also like to thank Commissioners Benassi and Albert, who joined me in the community walk the day after the event. The show of support from the Norfolk Police, city officials, and NRHA, among others, provided some comfort to the Young Terrace community. As I mentioned earlier, staff will be given the opportunity to provide any additional thoughts or reflection during the executive director's comments. It was very, very, I guess, burdensome to see that all of the folks being affected by that. It was really something to see people. It's one thing to read it in the newspaper, see it on television, but to be there and see the actual people who were harmed by this event was truly moving. And again, the folks who were there to provide that support, name the few, but also the onsite staff, who this wasn't the only and the most recent event that's happened in Young Terrace. So our thoughts really go out to them and appreciation for the work that they do during all of this time. Additionally, I'd like for your prayers and thoughts for Ms. Rose Harrington, our Commissioner, who is dealing with some serious health issues and will be with us today. I now invite your comments, if any, on the minutes from the October 14th board meeting. Mr. Chairman, I'll look them over and I'll move that we approve them. All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Carr?
Commissioner Albert?
Aye.
Commissioner Benassi?
Aye.
Commissioner Billard?
You said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, with the ma- Commissioner Purrier?
Aye.
Commissioner Gresham?
Aye.
Chairman Batsachar?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We're now going to the executive director's remarks.
Good morning, Commissioners and guests. Usually this time of the agenda, I usually talk about business and operations and provide updates to you, but I thought, given the recent events, especially what happened on November 3rd, that we give this time to, for myself as well as staff, to offer any thoughts or reflections that they may have in the aftermath of those of that significant event. I know there have been a lot of things that have happened since then, especially in regards to internally, we look amongst ourselves to figure out how we could have done things a little better just in terms of response. But some of those conversations can wait till afterwards because now we just really want to acknowledge sort of the outpouring of support that we've had during that time. And just, as Don alluded to, just the burden that the community has carried, as well as the staff that has carried during that time. I mean, it's been local and end of national interest the story has. And we continue to see how the, I would say, the national dialogue, especially in regards to gun violence, which had already taken place before. And so us as an organization, we're just trying to figure out amongst all the numerous, I guess, ways and methods that are out there to try to address issues related to gun violence, this has really given us the opportunity to see what we can do as an organization to sort of better address the issues and how it impacts the community. Just on a sort of a macro, a micro level, you know, we look at how we work with our residents, how we, it doesn't necessarily have to, the response doesn't necessarily have to be more police force, but when you start talking about gun violence and those who, you know, the perpetrators and those who are involved, there's a lot more that goes into it than you start talking about, especially when the national conversation starts, you start talking about looking at, you know, looking at the lives of the young men, the perpetrators, looking at the opportunities that they had as not necessarily more police force, but there could be opportunities that they missed out on during their when they were growing up, job opportunities, income inequality, poverty. There's a whole host of things that we need to look at in terms of an organization. We probably are doing some of the things, working with youth and things like that, making sure that they are engaged in schools. But I think this given us the opportunity to maybe find those efforts and what we're doing, having an emergency response, a robust emergency response is good, but there's a lot of things that take place beforehand so that we could help mitigate some of these situations that occur in our communities. Like Don alluded to, that was just one of, you know, a number of events that we had before and after. So just internally, we're thinking about some of the things that we can do to be a little bit more effective in working with our, you know, working with our residents, especially our youth, but also provide, being able in situations like this, being able to provide comfort for our communities and the residents that are involved. I have Eila, Kim Thomas, Donna Mills, and Karen Rose on the line. With this being a time of reflection, I wanted to open it up to them and see if they had any comments or reflections on what's happened over the past 10 days.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners and guests. As Don spoke about, we are really in a pivotal point in the work that we are doing here at NRHA. We, first of all, acknowledge that this is very difficult work. This is not the stuff that we like to show up to do every day, but it stretches us and it makes us reevaluate how and what we do to serve our communities. And I wanted to stress a few points today about the work that has really moved forward in light of some of the most recent tragedies in our communities. Number one, NRHA has committed to making sure that the mental health and well-being of our residents and staff is of utmost importance and leveraged in a way that we are not just aware, but we are reactive. So we have forged, through the use of Hampton Roads interest funding, to actually retain several local licensed clinicians and therapists to be onsite and on scene when these tragedies occur. You will see today, banners will go up in two communities, our two most recently affected communities, Young Terrace and Grand Village, advertising the free counseling services available to the residents as well as to the staff. We have been fortunate enough to work with these organizations so far who have found themselves providing very quick and responsive reactions to these incidents. I will say, it's just a matter of things happen. Banners were initially put up, were not the best quality, so we reordered something a little more sturdy, and we have also created a document, a flyer, to go out to the residents in those communities as well because we want folks to know this is not something that just being offered today does give them access. If anyone knows anything about trauma, we know that trauma often hits days, weeks, months, and in some cases, years after an event occurs. So we want to be positioned in a way that we can offer these services for as long as we need to, to not only our residents, but to our staff as well because our staff sees a lot of stuff going on. We also want to talk about just the fact that the beauty of the relationships that have been forged because of some of these incidents. In Young Terrace in particular, I've had quite a few organizations reach out to say that they want to be involved in making sure that they're helping us fill in the gaps in the community. So I am happy to report that although we are still working with the city of Norfolk to assess the possible use of the rec center and funding through the city, we've been given possession of that rec center again, so we are allowing community organizations to come in and provide programs and services to that community. We are still in conversation about the Grand Village Learning Center, I'm sorry, rec center, but we do know that these are things that have to be addressed, and we are asking our partners, really across the aisle, to come and help us understand what we can do and how quickly it can be done because I don't think this is something that can be left to another funding year, but it has to be a response that's actually active right now. Eila, you want to add anything on the service side?
No, I just want to say, one thing is, I want to thank our leadership, crisis stabilization services, our crisis response has been something that I've been, I'm trying to think how, but those I've been pushing for quite some time. I've always said it can't be us. I think events like this unfortunately prove that staff needs the support too. On that day, we, on the day of the event, within moments, within minutes, I don't even want to say hours, crisis stabilization services for the next day, they would have went out there that evening if it wasn't so hectic, was in place, not just for the residents, but for the staff. That group of individuals on that day serviced 19 individuals, both residents and staff, as well as some youth. And last I talked to her was Tuesday, and she was up to 23. And many of them have also made second interactions or communications with the counseling services. It's very important that we keep this going, not just for the residents, but for the staff. Can't continue to stress this, we need to make it known that it is okay to not be okay. It is okay to not be okay with what you've seen, what you're dealing with, what you just simply don't understand. My speech that made for everybody was, "I'm not okay with it," which is why we have people here that you can talk to. And the commitment from the counseling services, I also want to commend. Every last one of them has come back to us. They're part of this ongoing, they're part of this kind of, how do we not just make this something where we show up after an event? But we continue to offer this service as we go. So that has been very instrumental in the ability for us to create some more sustainable programming and counseling program and resources. And I just want to also commend the staff. Despite what they've seen, what they've been through, how they feel, the emotions that they carry every day, they beat me there. They beat me there as they looked parts. They were the part, they answered phones, they were prepared for that day. And that's very commendable. I don't know. No, it's either Donna or Karen, I think, because I'm the one who may want to offer. Good morning. So, Eila hinted on Kim as well, hit it on point. This has been challenging for everyone, the residents and the community, the staff. But I do think with the incident in Young Terrace, we were out there and we were trying to deal with it as best we could. The hope is that we don't have to experience this again, but I think we all know that that's not our truth right now. We're having incidents, we had an incident in Grand Village yesterday. It's just, it's frustrating to say the least. As far as the security side and the property management side, we have got to get back to resident meetings in the community. We got away from that with COVID. We just need to make that happen. We need to get back out there, we need to talk to the residents. We are really pushing our "see something, say something" message. So we have to rely on the residents to provide us with information when things might get ready to happen, or of course, once it's happened, but we need to be, try to be more proactive than reactive. And I don't have the answers. I think we're all working to figure out what approaches we need to put into place. We are continuing to partner with the police department. We've had several meetings. We are going to partner with the agencies that were a part of the Stop the Violence Forum on Saturday to not only provide resources, but also to look at ways that we can address the crime that's going on in our community. Karen has worked tirelessly with trying to get features in some of the communities, safety features, not only for the offices, for the staff. We've looked at camera installation. We've also contracted with a private security company that's now out in the community as an extra level. Again, not one piece is going to solve this, this is a puzzle, and we've got to look at it from different avenues and pull everything, every resource, any idea into this that we can help to make some improvement or to deal with this for everyone, the residents, the staff, everyone. And I don't, I think Karen is on the phone. I don't know if she has any additional comments.
Karen, do you have any additional comments you'd like to add?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Just to say that we will continue to work just as hard, if not harder, moving forward, trying to provide services for these communities. I want to especially thank there again our executive staff and our board members for supporting us. As has already been said, the four of us had our feet on the ground, doing what we do in spite of all circumstances, and we'll continue to do that. This has had a grave effect on everyone. I think sometimes the service providers forget that we have to take care of each other, and we've absolutely done that amongst ourselves. So thank you for your continued support. I look forward to new initiatives. We'll be sharing some of our suggestions with the board in hopes of your continued support. Have a great remainder of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I make a comment to Kim and Eila and Donna before they leave? And the reason I want to make this, Mr. Chair, is because they were, directly spoke to some of the things that we often deal with as Board Commissioners on a very regular basis. I thought it was the most frequent, and one back was to Eila. But was it the day before yesterday I reached out to you, Kim?
Yes, sir.
But it was at the request of one of our city partners, there was a local group of ministers wanting to reach out with inquiries about the community center. So I thought they wanted to go in and provide some services to the community center and connected them with Kim, and who did a great job of facilitating a phone meeting. What I found out was, they were trying to find out if there were any services and being offered in the community center. And it really, really made me feel tremendous that I had went a long to Young that morning and said to the community members who were reaching out, "There is a full-service primary care clinic going on every day in that center. There is the food bank that's operating in that center, giving food to the residents on a ongoing, regular basis, and resident meetings and activities as can be scheduled in there." Very comprehensive, very full order of activities that we don't hear about when we talk about our message. I just, and I'm not going out, I wouldn't have known that. The other thing I would say, and thank you, Kim, for your response to that, the other thing is, two or three days after the event, three or four days after the event, I happened to be in another meeting that night with a comprehensive full-service mental health provider. And they were talking about expanding their facilities to do some other things. And I said, "Well, with the tragic event that we just had in Young, I said, 'You guys should have been on the ground.'" They said, "We were." Eila reached out to us immediately, and we were there. So who knows? Outstanding. Thank you very much. The little things that people don't know that you're doing, and the staff, Michael, Donna, all of the executive teams, the way they pulled everybody into that, coordinated. You know, there's still a lot of egos out there that day. And you all worked them in a way that made them feel as facilitated partners. And I think you won some hearts with the way you responded. So thank you all very much.
I really appreciate it. Thank you all. And just not to lose sight of those that have been most impacted, and that's the families, especially the victims and the ones that have passed. I'd just like to recite a couple of the passing.
Excuse me, sorry.
Yes, I'd just like to recite a couple of passing proverbs that I think are appropriate. And then I'd like to ask you for a moment of time. "Good people die in acts of sacrifice, but death cannot kill their name." Sarah Constance, Deidre Brown, Nicole Love. "As long as we live, they too will live, for they are now part of us as we remember them." And I'd like to ask you for a moment of time. And in a second.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Now open up for other comments from Commissioners. Okay, then let's go ahead and move on to our next item, which is the city funding application. That would be Mr. Clark.
Morning.
Morning.
I got to tell you, it's a little hard to talk about a funding application given the gravity of everything else going on, but you know, try to do that now. Just, if you'll allow me one minute. You know, this, the recent reorder, the organization, the lady that you just heard from, a part of my staff now. And I, but I thank our chairman for mentioning my name. Those ladies deserve the credit. I saw the things, I saw people jump into action, and even with masks on, you could see the stress level. But these folks were still coordinating and trying to get help for others. And that's something they should be committed to.
A minute.
That said, let's talk about a funding application.
That's actually on page 12 on your.
Ma'am? Thanks. Don't go.
Oh, I thought you gave me the.
Oh, no, you said to start.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you gave me the thumbs up.
Thanks. Just, we'll be presenting the division funding application.
Can you come on for a second, Mike? The court reporter can get set up.
Oh, you meant, I was just supposed to start when you.
Yes, start now.
I didn't need to take down other stuff.
You can pick the other stuff up. This is the public hearing.
Okay, sorry.
That's fine, we'll give you a minute.
Sir, I'm sorry, did you say you were starting on page 12? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it's taking me a second.
You're all day. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I mentioned, this is going to do a review of our Development Division FY23 funding application. Typically, we do this in fall every year. Just acknowledging that we have a full agenda today, limiting this to about 10 slides, but it will recap the application and will also go into a public hearing immediately after. As you know, the funding sources supporting the Development Division are from the City General Fund, the Development Block Grant.
Excuse me, sorry. Sorry, I'm going to move a little closer to you. That's okay, sorry.
to middle income families. And the Homewood Norfolk, the 25,000 for program support. The general fund, again, you can see the bulk of it is with the economic development grants and also program management or admin, all about 600,000 for disposition, Monroe Building Rent. Residential options, or ROI, as you may have heard us reference, that's the collaboration that we have with the city and the community service board. Where, a number of years ago, you may have read, I think it was 2016, NRHA took over the ROI portion of this. And our ask is to support the housing needs of the community service board, their clients. And also, we have lastly, the Woodville Program Land. The Home Investment Partnership Fund at 1 point, a little over 1.2 million. That's, again, the home buyer program that we use for our low to moderate income home buyers. And also, there's a subset for the Chodos. And CD, which supports our home debt. You've seen me, over the years, use this chart. And I know, depending on where you're sitting, and this was not in your original PowerPoint, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. In FY20 and '21, there was a huge uptick in funding. And I wanted to kind of acknowledge this. It was because of the COVID relief fund. And I know Commissioner Perry, you were very concerned about how we were doing that program early on. I just kind of wanted to say, since we started that, which was roughly 18 months ago, we put out over $2.2 million to more than 400 applicants. And again, this is roughly a 16, 17 month period that those funds went out. As of now, it kind of wraps up the end of this fiscal, excuse me, calendar year. So, it's going to wrap up for us in December. But I wanted to mention that that's significant because it's not like we had a COVID relief department already in place. We had to pull together both from a lot of different departments to help support that need. Just a few other general development initiatives that we're doing this year. And as you know, a lot of our development initiatives carry on through multiple fiscal years. We're wrapping up, in the past, we mentioned the Pleasant Avenue, Cuyahoga Site, which is just below the 57th Bay Homes. We should be getting the infrastructure and new home construction going this year. We're gonna do the final street paving at the homes at Bay Hills, the 57th Bay project. We should be doing the final street paving and trees, street trees. So, there are additional trees that go with. That should be later this year. As Commissioner Masaccio reminds me, we're gonna do at least one, maybe two acquisitions and demolitions in Willoughby this year. We're gonna complete the demolition of the flood home units in the inner circle, Spartan Village. We continue to support Decalite Chodo in Berkeley. And we're going to be acquiring and demolishing one duplex and ultimately selling that block to the Chodo for single family homes. Again, it may not, all that may carry into the next fiscal year, but if we're lucky, we can get it done this fiscal year. As you know, we're completing the rehab and sale of the 15 car cycle. Home and home net still are doing counseling and providing home buyer assistance. And we also are looking to issue one R and P for infill development this year. I'm talking mainly, these are traditional development projects. As you know, the times are changing a bit. And next year, I may be showing you different projects, depending on what we're doing. But I just wanted to kind of highlight what we're doing now as well, and how it relates to the funding application that's coming up. Today, we are doing public hearing and submission to the city, review by the city of the application. And all those will, last spring, will be bringing this back to you again for final proof. With that, I'll stop there. Are there any questions before we go to the public hearing?
Commissioners, questions? Do you anticipate any difficulty with the city on any of the budgets?
Well, if I could go back one minute. We've somewhat trimmed what we are asked, if you will. And what I mean by that is...
You've already had some preliminary discussions with...
Exactly.
And you know pretty much what they...
We think, we think. I don't want to use capital here to make a discussion, but the items that we ask for, and I'll give you an example with Willoughby, that this is kind of a way it's opposed to. The conservation committee gives us a number of properties that they'd like us to go after in the fiscal year. They get the ward council person support. And we think it'll be 525 in May, and may not believe we anticipate some funding. And that has happened. Ward's Corner, as you know, that's been a big project that we, at the city, but they've utilized us for years to acquire and assemble land. So, to your question, again, you don't want to get too far ahead of yourselves, but we feel pretty good. We feel pretty good.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Then I'll go ahead and open it for public comment. Again, may raise your hand or use the chat box. Do we have anyone physically present who'd like to speak? All right.
Just a minute. Yes. Do I have to go there?
Yes, if you would. And please state your name, address, and...
I'm Mel Johnson, Moni Johnson. Hello, that's... Nice to see you all again. The last time I was here, I was 24, and I was 25. So, it's good to see that I'm still. I just think that when we're talking about budget, and I'm kind of professional, I'm an organizer, I have this, I think, there needs to be a way to look into more investment in the community. I know I come up here and I talk about maintenance, and I talk about the charge, and I talk about the way that the residents are living. But there is a direct correlation between how neighborhoods are maintained and the gun violence that takes place. And a lot of times, I come up here and I speak on behalf of what residents told me. I'm an organizer because I'm not someone who lives in the community. That makes me not an advocate. But in this situation, I am a black woman. And you guys are running neighborhoods that are led by almost all black women type households. And so, when we're talking about danger, and we're talking about gun violence, and we're talking about the results of neighborhoods that are, those are things that I see impact me and people like. So, while I don't have a specific, we should take money from here and put it here. There needs to be a large scale reinvestment in the way that people are living in the grounds that they're living on. Because I don't have stats with me, but working in how justice, there's direct correlations between how neighborhoods are treated and how likely people are to survive them. You guys have talked about crime in the neighborhoods before, and how people have identified these neighborhoods as places that can just show up and harm people and have little, you know, consequences. And that's because of the lack of pride or investment from, you know, there's probably to be, to be there. So, like I said, I didn't intend to do so. Probably not as forward as you guys would like, but I think it's something that we got moving forward in terms of reinvestment. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, please state your name.
Yes, sir. Good morning, everybody. My name is Vincent Hodges. Hello, 6... Vincent Hodges, thank you.
You pick up it?
Yes, ma'am. V-I-N-C-E-N-T-H-O-D-G-E-S. Resident in Norfolk in Little... I'm a social worker and community activist as well. I have a litany of things here, a score of things that going through knocking on doors, talking to black women in young terraces, high water gardens, in Calhoun Square, that they are humbly requesting, you know, need addressing. So, my question is, in this advocacy, advocacy that Ms. Johnson is talking about, are we looking at augmentation based on the ARPA funding that is coming in, or the capital, or I'm sorry, the infrastructure money that we know that are coming down? We have here for CIP, we have proposed, if I'm understanding right, proposed initiatives, right? So, my thing is, is A, have we talked to black women specifically? Because they're the ones that are left standing in the gap. If it's black men, they're either murdered or incarcerated. They're the ones staying behind. Have we advocated for them? That's number one. And then number two, you know, if we have funding shortfalls, are we looking for this new influx of like one-time money? You know, this once in a generational money? If it's been addressed with them, because there are things like we're talking about utilization and jumpstarting these representers. Again, you know, have we talked about specific programs, things like that? So, again, I know that there was a slide added that was added. It wasn't in the slide deck that we received as far as a printout. I'm just asking if that has been considered an augmentation in that this discussion goes on. Happy to talk to anybody after the meeting as well. Nice to meet you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Other? Do we have anyone? Miss Moore?
No, Mr. Chairman. I'm Chuck Alati, and we have no additional person present. I'm also checked for lines, and we have no additional questions. That is true.
Okay. With that, any final comments from commissioners? All right. Then I will then call the public hearing to a close. Thank you very much. Take a second. And then we'll now move on to housing operations. Donna Mills. And that's on page 22 in your packet.
Good morning again, Commissioner. So, I am back to go over the quarterly reports with you this morning. This is for the first quarter of 2022. So, this is for the period of July 1st to September 30th of 2021. This will only highlight four programs that are now under housing operations, starting out with the Housing Choice voucher program. I'm gonna highlight a few of the things that was in the report. And as always, we'll be able to answer any questions that you have after I highlight these areas. We're currently serving 3,823 Housing Choice voucher participants. 28 new landlords were added to the program during this quarter. And we conducted 1,011 of housing quality standard inspections. We also held in partnership with the City of Norfolk Rent Ready Program, a first in that way forward learning series. This took the place of the landlord summit. If you remember, we had our first one right before COVID. And because of COVID, we've not been able to come back and have a second one. So, in place of that, we have started this virtual landlord learning series. So, the first one was done in October, and it, sorry, in September. And it was featuring informational addiction prevention. So, we had a representative from Legal Aid that presented at that period. For the facilities management department, we are continuing to see leaks, trench leaks throughout our community. We've had an increase in high water gardens, and some of that has to do with the construction going on over there. So, they're working hard to get those addresses to the state surface. We've also had a couple of buildings in some of the communities that have been damaged by vehicles that have led to some extensive work that they've worked on during the course. Under the property management program, we have 3,183 units. Our current occupancy rate is 98.32%. That does not include, of course, high water gardens in the Digstown community where we're working with relocation and or renovation. Tenant accounts receivable for the quarter were at 5.43%. That is up from 2.83% in September a year ago. So, higher than we were before COVID, and it continues to increase. And I'll come back to that in a minute to talk specifically about delinquency. As far as additions and termination for this quarter, we had 48, 0.16% compared to last quarter, first quarter of last year. We were at five, so we're slightly under that number as well. Under the safety security department, we talked about some of this earlier today, about the efforts that the staff has put in place, continue to look at safety features throughout the community. We have continued to look at the band list. In this quarter, we've removed 50 individuals from the list. And the staff also participated in 50 informal hearings during this quarter. In addition to the four departments, you have a report included on the capital fund program through the DCM department, highlighting the work that they're doing specifically for our community. Because they're finishing up in the Digstown for the renovations there. And they've also started with a physical needs assessment process for all of our communities. You have a consultant come in and look at what the needs are actually in our community, so we can determine budgeting and need to move forward with getting those addressed. And those are my highlights outside of the tenant accounts receivable, which I can give you some numbers on that. Are there any questions that you have on the quarterly report? For me, I do have the directors and staff online as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Again, there's a much deeper dive and a lot more information in your packet. Donna hit the highlights, but if you want to drill down, there's quite a bit of information there if you wish to look at.
Okay. Now, just to touch on, if I may, on the tenant accounts receivable for this period, and this is as of October the 22nd, we currently have 612 residents that are delinquent in their rent at a total of $602,146. That is an increase of $375,000 from October of 2020, or 166% increase. Of that, 247 residents owe just the October rent only, and 365 residents owe two or more rent. To date, we have confirmed 160 residents have applied for the rental release program. We have received a few payments, but we have quite a few that we're still waiting for payments to come in. We have gotten the approval from the program. It's just taking a little while for those payments to come in for the families. We have six residents that have entered into a repayment agreement. And we are continuing outreach efforts for all of our families that have a delinquency to get some type of either an application in for the rental release program and or a term agreement set up. We recently were contacted by the City of Norfolk. They would have some funding for the BERT program, which is the Virginia Addiction Reduction Program, about $250,000 that they've reached out to us. So, we're working with them currently to see how we can get that fund, those funds in to help some of our families to have a very tight deadline of December 1st. So, we're working with them now and trying to get that money. Okay, now just touch on, if I may, on the tenant accounts receivable for this period, and this is as of October the twenty-second. We currently have six hundred and twelve residents that are delinquent in their rent at a total of six hundred and two thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. That is an increase of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from October of twenty twenty, or a one hundred and sixty-six percent increase. Of that, two hundred and forty-seven residents owe just the October rent only, and three hundred and sixty-five residents owe two or more rent. To date, we have confirmed that one hundred and sixty residents have applied for the rental relief program. We have received a few payments, so we have quite a few that we're still waiting for payments to come in. We have gotten the approval from the program, it's just taking a little while for those payments to come in for the families. We have six residents that have entered into a repayment agreement, and we are continuing outreach efforts for all of our families that have a delinquency to get some type of either an application in for the rental relief program and or a term agreement set up. We recently were contacted by the City of Norfolk, they would have some funding for the BERT program, which is the Virginia Addiction Reduction Program, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they've reached out to us. So we're working with them currently to see how we can get that fund, those funds in to help some of our families. They have a very tight deadline of December first, so we're working with them now and trying to get that money over here to go towards some of these down. Those are where we're at with our numbers. We are still working on a letter to go out to the residents about reinstating the late fees with the changes in the law, with how the late fees are calculated now. That letter is being drafted, it was due to go out last month, but we're trying to work out how our system will process the late fees. Because now it's a matter of a lesser of two numbers, it's not just a set amount. So we actually have an internal meeting today to figure that out, and then shortly thereafter, the letter will go out to all of the residents, letting them know about the changes and how the late fee will be charged and when that will be effective.
So you mentioned that there's as much as two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're negotiating with the city on?
So what I have been told is that's money that they can earmark to in our AJ, we just have to work out the logistics on how we get them the information they need.
And you got two weeks to do it?
But we can do it, we can do it.
So there's a path to get this done?
Yes, sir.
So this is, this is going to put a big Band-Aid on. Okay, good.
Yeah, well, it, it, right now it's just what information we can provide them, because there is confidentiality issues about what we can relieve. We're working that out, but we will make that happen before we see them.
Great news. Other questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And others? Next will be community engagement, that's on page forty-two, starting on page forty-two of your packet. Ms. Thomas, thank you.
Thank you again, morning one more time.
Good morning.
I want to provide this overview of the quarterly report provided to you in your packet in regards to community engagement in this division, which includes client services as well as economic opportunities. From the report, you will see the client services over this quarter, previous quarter, has engaged in a number of community programs, including hosting back-to-school events with our local schools and tenant management council. They also participated in the day of caring, the top management desk in two of our localities, doing things like painting and restriping back to all courts for the youth in the community to use. They've also conducted a series called The Talk. The Talk was actually sponsored by our family self-sufficiency program, and The Talk allowed residents engaged in that program to speak to lawyers and professionals and everything about pertaining to financial services, savings, home ownership, as well as mental health, and engaging with the local police department. We also have conducted many hiring events, including a virtual Amazon event. We are happy to say that thirty-two people attended the event, and we are waiting on numbers to continue to roll in, but we did have a number of folks who have been hired and accepted positions with Amazon, and that should be forthcoming in the next quarter. I want to point out just a few more things to highlight. On our workforce development program, we have one hundred and thirty-two participants, which is a really good number considering many of the COVID and unemployment provisions have ended, and we see quite a few people making the push to return to the job market. So we are continuing to forge ahead there. In the family self-sufficiency program, we had twelve program participants to graduate in the previous quarter. And those program participants left the program with a combined total of twenty-three, about twenty-three thousand dollars in escrow savings. So the escrow savings is the money that's put away for residents as they pay their rent while they're employed. When they successfully exit the family self-sufficiency program, that money comes back to them. In our youth services program, we have had really a lot of program participation in line of folks who are engaged in our other school youth program, that's a program that we use to teach our older youth about job training, on-the-job training. We maintain a strong contingency of twelve participants there, that's the max level based on funding that we can accommodate. We've had about twenty-five students participate in the Eastern Virginia Medical School Youth Program. This is a program designed to lead kids into STEM program, STEM career, STEM employment. It may be with or without a college education, but definitely leading them to more tech jobs and more jobs related to the medical field. And duplicated, I'm sorry, duplicated, we had a total of seventy-one participants in within this quarter. And what that really means is we've had some participants who participated in more than one program event, but we are happy to report that those numbers continue to mark up as schools have started, and many of our residents feel a lot more comfortable with getting out into the community. Again, our summer food program, we've served over one thousand two hundred meals in one quarter, so I'm really excited. While we are still putting the effort behind that program, we hope that as things kind of get better, we'll see those numbers out. But for right now, this remains one of our top-tier programs that we're committed to, and whatever we have to do to keep that program going. In the economic opportunity division, there were twenty-three contract opportunities that were passed along to registered Section Three businesses. So Section Three businesses coordinate with our economic opportunities manager when our, when the other contractors or other businesses make us aware that they have subcontracting opportunities available, and we pick residents or Section Three participants from our registry of participants to kind of market and delist those jobs to. We directed fourteen of our residents into direct job opportunities that have then become available because these twenty-three opportunity, or excuse me, twenty-three organizations have now started subcontracting jobs. And we do anticipate that number to increase as more activity happens around development, particularly in Tyewater Gardens. We're also continuing to support business growth and development opportunities. We had seven opportunities this past quarter, and really that's what that means is our economic opportunity manager, Linda Davenport, has been working with these companies to build their businesses to actually get to the point that they can bid on jobs or file the correct paperwork that's needed in order for them to participate in certain regulated activity as it relates to contracting. Any questions based on this report? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I don't know if you relate to the, yeah, but I have a question. Do we get any funding for any work, well, this may be better. Yeah, I should have asked, but do we get any funding from Opportunity Inc. for any of our workforce already in this program?
We do participate in Opportunity Inc. Council. So as funding is available, we are, I guess what we call a.
Considered.
Yeah, we are, I think that's better word, as considered organization, and it really depends on the funding that's available.
Is Sean Avery still heading up that? Let me know if I can help.
Okay.
I used to be something I would regularly participate with, and I'll make you help get, get us some funding. And maybe you'll talk to Eila, put some specific things.
Okay, thank you.
There's going to be significant job opportunities in Fort Smith at that new Siemens Gamaes plant going forward. And they're going to play hell, they're going to find it difficult to find employees, this is going to be a great opportunity. Those are going to be pretty good jobs over there.
Which way?
The wind turbine blade, Siemens Gamaes.
You know, I used to be very involved with that after. With the Hector Rose. I'm going to hold you up while I try to get my number back, but, but that may be the first or second blade made in this country. They weren't historically made in this country.
No, they're.
They were assembled outside of.
Correct.
And so that is significant, because they're going to pay very good money.
And I will make sure that we follow up on that opportunity.
And I'm connected with all that, I will try to find out, I'm going to be finding them a training center soon. And so it's to hire people, train them to go to work, so I'll be on the ground for it.
I'll take it.
Yes, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you. Other comments, questions first?
All right, thank you.
I'm the next one too.
Going to the next one.
But before we get to the next one, can I do take like this many seconds to say?
Anything you like?
I wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank Eila Smith for the work she's done here in our AJ. For those who don't know, Eila will be parting in our AJ in a couple of weeks to pursue other opportunities. While we are at loss at her. This also gives us an opportunity to look at some of the internal structures and things that we've done, and possibly how we can employ even more talent into this very talented team. So publicly, I just want to thank her for her sacrifice and her dedication. All right. As part of your board of commissioners' agenda items, there is a cover sheet that records the subject as People First, Empowered by Urban Strategy, USI Two-Year Impact Report Overview. Today, we have three folks on the phone, I believe it's three folks. Claudia Sparks, who is the senior project manager for USI. They are the People First program in Tyewater Gardens, providing people services and the people lead to the CNI project. We also have Alicia Walter, I'm sorry, Alex Feigs is on the phone, actually Alicia and Alex Feigs, Alicia Walters and Alex Feigs is on the phone, they're from the USI National Office. And Susan Perry from City of Norfolk Office of Housing and Community Development. They are here today to provide you with an overview of their year-two community impact report as it relates to the services and programs that have been conducted in the Tyewater Gardens community since July first, twenty twenty, until July first, July twenty twenty-one. So I will yield the rest of the time to do those folks on the phone. Thank you.
And before they start, this starts on page forty-nine of your packet. Go ahead, please.
Claudia, are you there?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Again, Claudia Sparks, and I am the senior project manager for People First, empowered by USI. And I'm excited to be here, to share with you all the progress and gains we've made in year two. I do want to start by saying, we too are saddened by the events that happened in Young Terrace and Grandy. We are on the ground, working in those neighborhoods every day, and it has come upon our heart to make sure that we reach out to our young people and our residents, just to make sure that they are connected to services and supports, to bring forth healing. I do want to mention that Teens with a Purpose, that I'm sure you all know, that they've been on the ground working with our young folks for many years. But we have partnered with them just to hear the thoughts of the young folks, because we don't want to leave them out. They live in these neighborhoods, it's their community, and they want to feel safe. You know, they've expressed that they have needs around conflict management, they're worried about folks going straight to guns and not being peaceable. So we are looking at offering services with our partner agencies to do trainings with those young folks around trauma-reducing strategies and conflict management, and just allowing them an opportunity to share how they feel. But we're in prayers with you, we consider ourselves a part of the team, and we too are focusing our efforts towards healing. So I'm going to, I've got to figure out how to do this. Okay, so I wanted to make sure that you guys recognize that this report, it covers year two. We are now almost halfway into year three, and there are more results, but this report in particular will focus on year two, which began July one, twenty, and ended June thirty, twenty twenty-one. So here we go.
And this starts on page seventy in your packet.
All right, just wanted you guys to have a picture of the team before you. Very talented, dedicated group of folks. We have grown tremendously since year one. We now have nineteen staff. Among that are nine family service specialists who work directly with our residents, case managing them. We have two assistant senior project managers, Ms. Nicole Brown is over relocation and family support services, and Ms. Vicky Madison is over our pillars and our service contracts. We also have two mobility specialists who help with the relocation process, and of course, admin, as well as a workforce specialist. We couldn't do this presentation without stopping to have everybody just ingest what the group of us thought it would be, our mantra. This is what we go by, it guides, is our guiding principle. All St. Paul's families will be safe, supported, and thriving, that's the end result. We start with the end result in mind, and every effort that we have going forward is towards that end. As the city in our AJ and USI, we make the team, and this is what we establish to be our guiding principle. So when we say that we want to make sure that everyone is safe and supported and thriving, we know that that can only be accomplished if we take a holistic approach. So I wanted you guys to know that those approaches are based around four pillars. That's education, all children and youth in Tyewater Gardens are ready for school, thrive in and out of school, graduate from high school, and are prepared for college, career, and life. Economic mobility, all households in Tyewater Gardens before and after redevelopment are economically independent. Health, all children and adults living in Tyewater Gardens before and after redevelopment are mentally and physically healthy. So year two, we have grown, we went up twenty-five percent in engagement. That means that we are servicing twenty, seventy-seven, I'm sorry, five hundred and seventy-seven households. That's ninety-four percent that are enrolled in services. What does that mean? That means that they are case managed, case managed from beginning to end. Once they are assessed, we sit down with them and develop a family development plan that speaks to the goals that they have set for their family, to make sure that they're on the path that they desire for their families, what it looks like for them thriving. And we work throughout that process from relocation to beyond, to make sure that they accomplish those goals, providing them with supports and services, trainings and tools, to empower them to reach their better selves, their better future. Never leaving them behind. We must contact our residents every month, always updating, always inquiring what their needs are, helping them eliminate barriers, what that, whatever that might be, if they need food, if they need training opportunities, if they want to go to work, if they have childcare needs, that's what case management is all about, to make sure their services are matched to the needs of the family. So housing stability, in year two, we assisted one hundred and forty-three, or ninety-two percent of the one hundred and fifty-six families who relocated from Tyewater Gardens. This did not happen without challenges, it's not an easy process. It's not an easy process, but that's the reason why case management is so necessary, to make sure that we are supporting them through the process. That begins with a mobility counseling, to inform them of what they need to do when they're applying, when they make their choice, whether they are choosing housing choice voucher, or choosing to relocate to another neighborhood, or choosing to move on their own. The choice is theirs. Through that process, they have to make the decision what's best for them. Of course, if you accept a housing choice voucher as your choice, we need to make sure that they are credit-ready. Some of them are not quite there yet, so it's been difficult finding landlords who are willing to accept residents who have low credit scores. These are challenges that we face. And how we've done that is we've partnered with many project property managers who are willing to work with our folks. Of course, that sometimes results in deposits that can be upwards of three times the rent. Those are barriers that we help eliminate. We mitigate by using barrier elimination funds to help them pay deposits. Their hands are held through the application process, through viewing properties. We also make sure that they have face-to-face meetings with the properties that they're interested in so that the property managers have a visual, are able to see a personal story about our residents. Sometimes when you look at an application on paper, it's just that, it's just an application. We want them to match their personalities with the properties and understand how important it is to our families that they find a property that they can be proud of and live well in. To assist in this process, we have done a few things to help mitigate the barriers. We have instituted landlord incentives. Sometimes rent reasonable does not match how much they want to offer as rent. So a lot of times, so that they are willing to take our families on, we... There might be a gap, let's say their rent is fifteen hundred. Rent reasonable, rent reasonable for a CV might be fourteen hundred. So we would pay the one hundred times twelve upfront, so that they are receiving the amount of rent that they projected. This has allowed more of our families access to properties. We have contracted with Legacy Builders, which is a realtor group, just again, to help us identify properties, because during these times, it's been challenging to find properties who are willing to accept housing choice voucher in neighborhoods of opportunity. So these realtors are out there every day, helping us identify properties for our families. Just some of the strategies that we use to mitigate the barriers they may face and challenges. So housing stability, year two. Assisted families are making the right relocation choice for their family. As I mentioned earlier, some of them chose to be transferred to another property. Many of them, most of them chose housing choice voucher. Our number here is, of the one hundred and forty-three, ninety or sixty-three percent chose housing choice voucher. That's the majority of the families. Twenty-eight or twenty percent chose public housing unit transfer. Eighteen or thirteen percent chose the project-based housing. Seven or five percent rented elsewhere. This is what we're really excited about. Of course, it has always been our desire to move as many as we can towards neighborhoods of opportunity, but the main goal is to reduce the concentration of poverty. So fifteen percent were relocated to a neighborhood of opportunity, as defined by HUD, which is less than forty percent poverty and a less than sixty-two percent minority concentration. Thirty-nine percent were relocated to... I'm sorry, they were relocated to neighborhood of opportunity. Forty-six percent were relocated to less than forty percent of poverty, but not necessarily less than sixty-two percent minority concentration. This is an important number for us. Although we may not have had as many moved to neighborhoods of opportunity, we do recognize that less than forty-two, forty percent of poverty is amazing, that we have relocated that many, where concentrated poverty is greatly reduced. They're coming from a neighborhood with more than eighty percent poverty, so we count that as a victory. And forty-five percent of those who were moved to less than forty percent were actually moved to less than twenty percent poverty. Again, these gains exhibit that we are working to drive the needle down, and we are deconcentrating poverty. Education, year two. Maintaining higher rates of enrollment in early learning programs while increasing on-time graduation. So, the number and percent of resident children, zero to three, participating in center-based or formal home learning programs, baseline was at thirty-eight percent. By year one, it was sixty-eight percent, it's now fifty-five percent. That is a reduction, but we do have to be mindful that the pandemic did, of course, affect the ability of many of our childcare centers to operate. Also, a lot of families chose to keep their kids home. They were just as wary as most of the population around the world was worried about their children being exposed. Number and percent of students who graduate on time. Seventy-eight percent at baseline, at the end of year two, that was eighty-three percent. We had thirteen graduates graduate on time this year. Maintaining high rates of health insurance and connection to medical home while increasing the percent accessing services to manage chronic health conditions. At baseline, the number and percent of residents who have a place to go, where they regularly receive good healthcare, other than the emergency room, went from thirty-three percent at baseline, eighty-three percent in year one, and is now at eighty-one percent. Number and percent of individuals connected with services to manage chronic health conditions, we are now at eighty-eight percent. That's tremendous growth, and this is thanks to one of our partners who is working with our residents to manage those chronic health conditions. That's the People's Pharmacy, she's with most of the residents. Number and percent of residents who have health insurance, that's now a whopping eighty-nine percent. We're really proud, as we said, that our folks are connected to care, that they are regularly being seen, they don't go to the emergency room, and they're taking care of their health, because of course, if you don't feel well, all other aspects of your life are impacted. So we want to make sure that our residents are healthy.
Claudia?
Yes.
Suzanne Perry. Do you mind if we interrupt with questions, or would you rather us hold questions until the end?
I think it might be best if you, you can, you can ask questions, that's fine.
Whatever you could get. I have just a question about the number of percent of residents who have health insurance, and your perspective of what the barriers are to accessing that, because most of those, if not all of them, are Medicaid-eligible, or eligible for some kind of, you know, subsidized healthcare? So, you know, what are the barriers to not having that number of you a hundred percent, which is, I'm sure, your goal?
Well, absolutely, I understand your question well, and you're right, most of them do qualify for Medicaid. What is most important here is that they access the services. You know, a lot of residents, they just run to the emergency room, and they're not receiving regular care, going to physicals every day. This is about education. This is what I mean when I say in that family development plan, we talk about what it means to live well and encourage them to find a peace and peace, so that they're receiving that care on a regular basis and are not just running to the emergency room when things go wrong. It's that preventative care that we are promoting. And consistently, we work with our residents when we meet and have contacts with them, always encouraging them to continue to seek care on a regular basis consistently, and not just wait when there's an emergency. Does that answer your question?
Not exactly. I mean, I appreciate that, and I think that's really important, but I think that the gateway to accessing that check back, to actually have the health insurance. And so I'm interested in kind of what the, I mean, how do you work with the benefits folks at Human Services? This is relatively, to me, a high percentage of folks without health insurance in a population that this should be, it should be acceptable.
Right. So our family support specialists are constantly encouraging them to reapply, you know, as they have increases in income or changes in income. It means speaking with your caseworker and making sure your case is updated through the City of Norfolk Human Services. So we just have to be mindful and always remind our residents that you have to update your applications to make sure that the Medicaid is active. Again, the end goal for us would be a hundred percent, but all we can do is always encourage them to do so and connect them. Make sure they schedule those appointments, make sure they keep the appointment set when you have to go in for updates.
Thanks, Claudia.
Mm-hmm. So economic mobility, in year two. We have increased our income from seventy-three percent to ninety-four percent. Baseline was forty-seven percent. Working less than thirty hours was twenty-nine point eighty percent in year one. It is now seventy-one point twenty percent, so more are working at least part-time. Working thirty or more is up from twenty-seven percent to seventy-seven percent. Again, we're really pleased that we're moving more folks to work. We are connecting them with programs such as Dignity of Work, which is a training program for folks who are interested in construction.
Claudia?
Yes.
Do you mind going over that slide where it shows one ninety-nine equals seventy-four percent, and then two fifty-five equals seventy-three percent? That seems odd. Do you see that graph? I'm just trying to make sure I get it correctly for the minute.
Oh, okay, one ninety-nine is the number of residents, which was seventy-four percent at that time. It is now two hundred and fifty-five, which is seventy-three percent of those in services.
So the number of residents is increasing, but the percentage of those served is decreasing? I'm not understanding the map.
We increased our outreach and engagement in year two.
So the way I read it is that the number increased, but as the number increased, there were less employees. Right. The percentage shouldn't be, I guess the trend up is based on the number of one ninety-nine and two fifty-five, and there was additional fifty-six people or less employed to bring that seventy-four percentage down to seventy-three. That's how I read it, but it might be, I don't know.
Maybe we can clarify that later, we don't need to do that right now, but I don't think the graph is self-explanatory.
So there are more people in services now, which would make the percentage different because it's based on a different amount of folks that have been engaged.
More people, but perhaps a less percentage.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I have one more question, Claudia? So are we saying that there are more people engaged, but of the more people engaged, the percentage goes down because it's less employed?
A lower percentage of that number is now employed.
So seventy-four percent of one ninety-nine is employed. We went to two fifty-five, now it's a series of people less people are employed.
Right, that's what I'm reading.
If I may, just from the outside looking in, it does appear that it's misrepresenting the data. You know, it's just hard for the lay to consume it, because it says number of percent of employed. So, disagreeing with what you're saying, thank you.
Okay. Alicia, if you don't mind, you can hop in and explain how we measure, perhaps.
Claudia, maybe you don't need to worry about it, and we'll provide a follow-up explanation to the board. We need to move this forward, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem at all. Okay. All right, so economic mobility, year two. We have increased income from eighteen thousand five to eighteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-six. This is incremental change, and of course, we are continuing to always seek employment partners who are offering wages that are, of course, living wages. So we want to continue to reduce poverty. But the end result is, since beginning this project, most of the employment, the median range was fourteen thousand. It has gone up by four thousand to eighteen thousand. So we're really proud of that, it's incremental change. And again, we are constantly seeking employment partners to make sure that we are pushing the needle towards decreasing poverty that offer living wages. And I find it important to mention that we are utilizing economic inclusion progress. We use black-owned and/or operated organizations for fifty percent of the contracts, the supportive service agreements that we have with our partners. Fifty percent of those are black-owned and operated. Fifty-seven percent of those contract dollars, which is three hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and five that are black-owned and/or operated, and two hundred and forty-three, eight hundred and ninety-eight are the other dollars to our partners, not black-owned. And this is just a snapshot. Five hundred and seventy-seven are supported. Four hundred and sixty-five households in year one is now up to five hundred and seventy-seven households. One hundred and forty-three assisted. Those are families, out of the one hundred and fifty-six total families relocating, one hundred and forty-three utilized the assistance of the service in year two. With the support of People First, thirty-eight families moved to HUD-defined Neighborhood of Opportunity in year two. With the support of People First, ninety-seven job placements were made in year two. Out of the three hundred and forty-nine total eligible workers, two hundred and fifty-five were successfully employed by the end of year two. And here again, the annual income baseline was fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-seven at the end of year two. That is now eighteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-six is the average household income. Four hundred and forty-eight insured obtained health insurance by the end of year two. That was three hundred and forty-seven in year one. Forty-eight percent received care in year one. Forty-eight percent received care in year one. That's up. Eighty-eight percent is almost double. Eighty-three percent of our youth graduated on time. Sixty-eight percent were enrolled in year one. Fifty-five percent were enrolled in early childhood education and childhood programs this year. That's just a snapshot. And here again.
Claudia, Claudia, I'm sorry, Suzanne again, with, and this, this may be uh, uh relates to your model, your model case management perhaps. But can you just tell us briefly what the difference between supported and assisted is? Is supported just a, a touch, a, a contact and assisted is a higher level case management or the other way around?
I. Well, well, Ashley, uh it, it means the same thing. So you may be seeing a different term in other places, but supported and/or assisted means that they are enrolled in case management services.
And so i- is the level of case management, the level services more for folks who've assisted than supported?
So we have, so if you're looking at the one hundred and forty-three assisted in terms of job skills and employment, um so that means that they were reported to our workforce pillar um and assisted with uh connections to jobs and opportunities and um training opportunities. It, they are still of the five hundred and seventy-seven supported. That's just another uh pillar that we attack when we are case managing our folks. We refer them to the services that they need in order to thrive. So they were assisted by the team with connection to employment opportunities. Does that make sense?
I see. Yeah, God, thank you. So these, these numbers are directly related to the pillars on top of them?
Yes. Absolutely.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, please.
Um, I think I want to start by saying, I think in twenty-fourteen, the mayor started a commission on poverty. I know you were on that, Suzanne.
All right.
Oh, Nash and Cheryl, and the work that you're doing here, Claudia, and the numbers that I've seen represented in these charts are outstanding, especially where you're talking about relocation out of impoverished neighborhoods, right? But my question, kind of thinking back in on what we talked about as far as the graph representation, we assisted a hundred and forty-three families of housing stability, but in the graph, we have a sample size of ninety-seven. I'm not understanding what the differences, like how did we differentiate? We assisted a hundred and forty-three families, but in the graph that shows that we have forty-five percent, which is twenty percent or less, we're using a sample size of ninety percent. Why aren't we using an entire one hundred and forty-three percent to be able to use that data, if correct, as a, I think, a homework for this city of what we've been trying to do the last ten years?
Okay, I'm trying to figure out where you.
Okay, if you go back to the slide, if you had uh, when you first started, it was a sentence that said housing stability year two.
Right.
Assisted one hundred and forty-three or ninety-two percent of the one hundred and fifty-six family?
Yes.
I'm using that as the base number. But right here on the graph that you're showing now with the line, as well as the one where we're talking about uh housing stability in year two, the N, I'm guessing that's the sample size number of ninety-seven, which means we have about fifty or sixty families that aren't counted in this data, if I'm, if I'm reading it right. So where are those bigger?
The others moved to public housing. So we are, we're focusing on those that we assisted with moving neighborhoods of opportunity, those who use the Housing Choice voucher program. Or the others have transferred to other housing areas.
So my question is.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So again, it's based on choice. Some of ours, uh residents choose to be transferred. Not all have chosen the Housing Choice voucher program. So they do what's best for their family.
Agreed, agreed.
Also can change at any time. So let's just.
Counting in those.
The housing choice. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If, if you're counting those who relocated back into these public housing communities for the gentrification, what would that number look like as far as the forty percentage? Forty perc- what would our number look like as far as how many people moved out of that area? Am I, does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, you're, I, I, I'm.
Oh, oh, I'm thinking of forty-five percent move to twenty percent or less will go down to a certain number where we count in those entire families that we assisted, including the public housing.
And they go back.
And maybe there's something like a further discussion that we can break back up.
Maybe, 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 because it's just the data. I can't, I can't tell whether the, the data doesn't make sense to me or whether the presentation of data doesn't make sense to me, Claudia.
We, we have a, a data expert on the call.
Okay.
I'll allow her to answer so that she can make this clear.
Okay, I'm sorry. I love, I'm not completely clear on the question.
Oh, dear. No, we can't hear that. So much background noise. Can we, can we perhaps provide an extenor, an explanatory sheet for next time and maybe reschedule this so that that can be available to explain that sheet after we've given you more time to provide the backup for the data? That works for Commissioner Dillard. We'll try to regroup. We can't be labor at this point, this morning. So we'll try to regroup Claudia and um, and your colleagues. Does, does that sound good? If you could please provide additional data? I think it's perhaps a matter of presentation of the pie chart and the numbers.
Absolutely. If we can get a written, um, the written questions because I can't.
Yes, we'll, we'll follow up.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Yes, we can definitely.
Kim Thomas will get with Commissioners Dillard and Purrier to um verify the question and send it to you in writing. And we will follow up.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Claudia. Thank you very much, Claudia.
Thank you.
Thanks, Claudia.
Okay, uh, let's see. We do have one, uh, monthly activities or any questions? That starts on page eighty-five. Any questions on the monthly activities? Okay, uh, dare say, uh, I'd like to remove the thorn from Miss Purrier's side. And to, I'm going to remove the thorn from Miss Purrier's side and ask her to talk about the election of officers.
Thank you. You want me to read that?
Well, it.
I'm happy to do so. Could you, it has been a thorn in my side. Um, I am, I'm happy to, in fact, I'm trying to take my net. Um, to uh, to present a slate, which uh is of our.
Chair, vice chair.
Chair, vice, vice chair, chair of Mr. Zatsachia, vice chair, Mr. Albert, who's in at Centia. I hope that, that, that's just one's now.
Yeah, you do, let me.
If we can, just a second to see Mr. Albert's available.
And while we're doing that, I'm happy to um accept any further nomination or.
Hearing none?
I'd like to make a nomination.
We're going to proceed. Okay, so um, it, it, so I've moved that we accept this slate as presented.
A second.
Cards?
Okay, just acknowledging for the record that Mr. Albert is not in the room at the moment.
But I talked to him and he's agreed to.
He's agreed to serve and Chairman Muzatsho, I'm assuming you've agreed to serve again. Okay, we're going to proceed with the votes, calling the ball. Commissioner Van Exen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillard?
Aye.
Commissioner Purrier?
Aye.
Commissioner Gresham?
Aye.
Chairman Muzatsho?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Ms. Purrier, for keeping us back on track.
Thank you, uh, you and Mr. Albert for your leadership and that continuity of leadership during these challenging times is very important. I appreciate your willingness to continue to serve and we, I know I speak for the whole board that is that we will support you in any way we can.
Thank you so much. And, and we do have a really good group here uh bringing many different perspectives to the, to the board and uh we will certainly hope to continue that. Next in our is a review of any of the committee meeting notes. Anybody have any questions on those? Did Mr., before we go into closed session, did Mr. Knight leave Raytron?
I think he's still here.
I think he mentioned the rest of them.
Oh, okay. But I, I, instead of having the closed session and then everybody leave and then come back, would we?
Here's Raytron coming.
Yeah, he's here. I'll ask Raytron before you did. We, we're about, we were going to go into closed session, but I didn't want to keep, keep people around here and ask the speech, so please come on.
All right. Good morning. Your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Raytron White. I live in. I am the T M C president of Randy Village for the last, so in my twelfth year as an executive. Um, I've heard a lot of things this morning. Um, I'm a little hurt and a little concerned about the thing that where I, my heart goes out to young terrorists and all the families are affected, all the kids, all the people and all the staff who are affected. Uh, but the shootings have started in Randy Village months before this happened. Um, I think you talked about the shooting. The shooting last night, close up in the morning. I have pictures. It's a lady house, a bedroom, a bathroom. Um, and the point I have to make this morning is, uh, I feel a lot of literature in our pamphlets, but we don't get any literature out in our neighborhoods like that. It's a good idea, the shooting, what to do and how to do stuff and code red, what to do and how to do. Um, the concern is, and Ms. Miller, what she was in here, that um we have not heard from anyone. Um, Ms. Rose has called me, uh Karen Rose called me, and every time I call, they call the police and the residents have got the shooting on. Called us the last shooting. That's why they apprehended two suspects because of the residents calling the police. And I have to give my kudos to the, to the residents of Randy Village to call me the police at a time and they were out there just like this. So um, we have no one, no one to uh, to send a letter out to the residents. Uh, just a concern and to listen, we know what's going on. If any kind of questions or any concerns of what happened at the shooting neighborhoods, give us a call. I understand the staff is going through, but important thing, the residents are going to tell. We see no support from N R H A when it comes to this kind of functional rear shooting. Um, the conversation we had on Monday that um I had in my meeting, uh, Mr. N R H A come, that no one called them. That's a ball of baseball. I'm a resident. I called them, told them the person, the place, the thing and where the shooting happened. No one had did any kind of investigation. So they ended up calling the police and the police have got into it and they're doing stuff with them now. But the point about it is, we say all this stuff, we do all this and we commend people, but when the purpose of this community and the residents are suffering. We have good residents in Randy Village, very good residents. They don't call, they don't go because they can't get to the phone in Randy Village. We have a whole new staff. People cannot answer the phone when a resident calls. Mr. Cuffey got shot twice. He's eighty years old. How would they fight that? He called a bullet in his floor at ten o'clock the following day. So we're concerned about the residents not being heard or not being cared for. We're getting all of these um mental health people's fine and damage. But if the residents know, at least know, listen, we know what's going on. It's a letter. It can be from a proxy manager, it can be from a custodian. Just saying that we're concerned about it. If any questions, give us a call at this number. And we're always saying that we're, you know, we're not saying, we're saying stuff. And I've had meetings with Ms. Miller and everybody else. There is no repercussions of the meeting. We were meeting about two months ago with Ms. Jackson and the rest of them. Not one time they came back to rebuttal from the meeting. I'm tired. I am tired. I try to fight for my neighborhoods and my residents because that's my job to do. I don't get paid at all for that. The people are getting paid. We ask questions. We ask them to do things. And there's nothing we're concerned about when we, when we ask. There's no rebuttal at all. And we're just so sorry, even if residents are young, you know, unfortunate persons, people had lost their lives. But we could have lost our lives in Randy. The young man ran right around me when we was outside. With a gun shooting, we were outside. No one called, but I called them the last time and said this was going on. No one called the neighbors, are you all right? I had to get out there and do that. No one from the window, nor from N R H A said anything about the shooting when we called. Nothing. But Ms. Rose, she called me and told me I'm getting on it. But we need to do better as an agency. If we want their respect and want the residents to do their job as police and neighborhood, we need to respond back to them, not three, four months later, not after somebody has to die and get, everybody want to get on TV and say they're sorry and they're doing all this. We need to start it now. Now, I've called and asked. I met Mr. Ron Jackson on yesterday, did yesterday, and we came up with some solutions to do. Directly and code. We want to let kids do anything. There's nothing to do. And we have a, we have a policy, a M O U with Randy Village and, and, and the city with many social groups together saying, I shouldn't have to help write the M O U. That ain't my job. She get paid for that. Let them do that. But let the community come and be a part of, voice of that. The last time I asked to do something, I was turned down. And I'm, I'm sick and tired of having my ideas and stuff that still look, these are still just over. That's not how we do business. I work partnership. We can't be partnership without ourselves. I was on partnership with Nick. You know, I get tired of every time a shooting comes. They're knocking on my door. They're calling my cell phone. They don't call you off. They call me. And when I call to let the people know that needs to know, okay, we're going to work on it. What? Someone had to get killed in Randy Village before we didn't get somebody to come and do something. Now I've talked to our people in the city and they're stepping up. The chief stepped up. I met them twice. They stepped up. Now we need the, N R H A needs to step up, to do something. I shouldn't have to call five, six thousand times to get somebody. I already called the news yet somebody can't give me a call back. It's a problem. It's a problem when the residents are not being heard. It's a problem. No one came out to walk out and say anything for the last five shootings we had in that month in Randy Village. They didn't call the residents at all. And I tell you, someone in this room, family members on, got affected about, about the last shooting.
Who was that? Raytron, what did you say? Say it again.
The last time we had a shooting, someone in this room, family members got affected about it. Yeah. And I'll tell that person, you know, in private, they got that close because that person was in that car. That person was probably shot. Just kind of like they were thinking about it. Their car got shot. And we know who's doing it. We know who's doing it. And we've told the people. They asked, they told us and they hated from N R H A that we have that proof. So you want me to go outside with a shooting, videotape it, or find him with a gun on somebody? That's not my job to do. My job is to inform you to let you know what's going on. And it's proper people that gets paid the money to do it, to investigate. I'm not an investigator. I'm a civic league leader. I bring the problems and let you all know what's going on. We try so hard in our neighborhood. And it's coming from other people that's living out there. We have to do better to reinvagorate the people that come out there. Because kids are walking around. I was in Calvary so I tried to take my, my report. The man had a Glock, not a Glock, a who's it? It goes this big, walking the street at three o'clock in the afternoon. Get me to death. We felt we need presence and I'm going to city council again. Next one, letting know if we have to assign some other things in the daytime. It has to start with the runoff. If they're not in school, you know they're not in school and they want to leave. That's a problem right there in our, in our, leaving the two nights in school, that's the cancellation of your leave. We have to start from that part and work our way up. If anything we can do to make sure the kids are in school and they're doing right, they're doing right, they got somewhere to go. They got somewhere to go, they're going to do that. Our students is closed. Records is closed. In our own records, and you can get in it. I don't care about the street being closed, the batteries can get in. I've asked for years, for years to have it. And eighty-three to ninety-three, the recs and the T M C had a key to the building. Had the kids doing stuff. That building saved my life. The kids have nothing to do but sit on the corner and talk and find a way to get it done. The boats in place, you can find kids know what's going in the neighborhood. The recs, they don't talk in the recs. And we listen, but there is nothing that we can do because our students are closed. And I'm asking N R H A to board to look into this, y'all, and not to say we're working on it. We don't look at it because it, because we got too close for home. It's too close for home, shooting every night, this morning at four o'clock in the morning. There's one way to get in Randy Village and one way to get out for the next two, two years. So someone has to come in the neighborhood to get out of the car. So, you know, we have to do better. I, I asked Mr. Ron Jackson to look at some things, but we have to do better. And it starts with the people covering us all the way down to the management, to make sure that we're notifying people and let them know that we're caring about what's going in the neighborhood. I guarantee you, once you start notifying them, they also start calling, I saw the young lady, I saw this, that, that this morning, how they came in, how it came out. If you let them know that you're caring about what's going in the neighborhood. Because this right here is a good thing. That should have been out of my neighborhood. I can get everything else, you know, what you gotta re, you reexamine all this stuff. With stuff like this, it's very powerful to show you how, if something happens, something moving, this shooting gets up and all this, this is wonderful. And in this board, we should be in every household under the N R H A public house. So if that's all I can say, and, um, got any comments to ask me, um, it's just really sad. It's really sad.
See, I just want to say, uh, that, uh, I think we have safety committee once a month. And I really would like to have suggestions, like Tom Raytron just had, Raytron just gave. They could come to our safety committee, uh, once a month, to give us an opportunity to process it, or come up with some solutions for that.
Right. I, I think it's, it's clear that the, uh, issues that Raytron and others have brought up today uh, are widespread, and we will have to have a much larger conversation, uh, on those. So, but that, that's absolutely a good thing, though. Thank you, Raytron, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Stay safe, Claudia.
All right, how do you think you're?
Know where you want to be.
Yes, absolutely.
May I ask a question on that? I don't, just as a point of order, I don't, this is my first time here and I don't want to be disruptive. Um, if the safety committee meetings are happening once a month, but with the prevalence of the violence that's happening?
Okay, okay, I understand. What was that?
I'm sorry, with the prevalence of violence that's happening, we've had three major shootings, uh, at least this is in Young Terrace, over the last ten days or, what, fourteen days now? Um, if the safety committee meetings, meeting, meeting once at once, if that prevalence is, is enough, seems like maybe there's a need to have one earlier than that, sir?
Yeah.
Just a question, not-
No, no, I get it, but from my perspective, safety committee is but one vehicle that we have in place to try to address some things long-term. So not, you know, not to respond to, uh, a immediate issue, but just have us, we can help put structures together long-term. The N R H A board is a policy board, and so some of the things that we can hear in the safety committee and, and, once a month, but before COVID, we were once in the neighborhood, state meeting would be here, state meeting would be in the neighborhood. So we get a chance to hear and then put some long-term structural things in place that, that help. We've been trying to shape a, uh, strong, uh, committed response, how, where do we need, uh, resources, that kind of thing. So that, that's, that's what the safety committee not intended to, uh, you know what I mean? Respond to every, uh, activity or every point of, uh, unsafe or, or about, issue about, but just long-term structural thing. That's, that's in addition to it.
In the life.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I understand. Thank you.
Well, Chairman, that's a question. Chairman, um, goes to you, a question. Isn't there a way that we can get Mr. Jackson, we can get, open some buildings up, have some meetings? Our residents are tired of sitting out. They want to talk.
Yeah.
And isn't, in, asking to tell other residents, they like to talk to people that don't work for N R H A. They talk to people that lead and then get the point across. So can we open some buildings up, so we can have some dialogue, to talk to residents, to figure out what's going on? They could talk to us, and the leaders, other neighbors can talk to you all back if it's going on. Because the, the buildings are closed, and we can't get in. Our residents, we're gonna have to figure some way because the streets. Mr. Jackson figured out how to get in my office, took him like a, a rocket science to get out there. So we have to figure out how to get out there to have it, but we need to open up some buildings and so the residents can talk. Because I guess they're so fed up now, they don't want to all tell you what's really going on.
Yeah, there was a couple of things that we had talked about this morning, and we were specifically talking about Young Terrace. But one of the things that, that sort of came up is that we needed to engage the residents more. I know that COVID put some of those efforts back, but that's, that is definitely an effort that we're looking to, to start back again. Because that's really an important part, uh, just making everyone aware and then so another community doesn't feel like they're being neglected. So we just need to do a better job of making sure that we really put forth that effort in terms of engaging and, and sort of like what you suggested in terms of meeting with the residents in one of the built, in some, uh, someplace out there, Randy Village, and we do the same for all the other.
If, if we can get, if we can get like a, even to rent a tent, instead of be outside, this is what, hoping it won't be so cold. To have it, because we can't get it on one side, on the other side.
Yeah. All right, thank you. We definitely need to.
Yeah, I'll do it. Again, thank you, folks. But see, I don't want to interrupt you, but I, I have to leave, and I know our, uh, our closed session, uh, issue requires an in-person, uh, vote. So I don't know how we can, uh-
Can we, can we move forward now?
Yes.
Do, do you, do you want to?
I'll call you.
Just a point of order for, for our commissioners, do you want to meet in closed session and then come out and vote as was originally planned? Or given some of the time constraints and the fact that some of you have to leave the meeting, do you want to go ahead and vote now and do the closed session after the vote on the settlement agreement?
We're voting on this, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll call for the vote now, then we have a conversation.
So, um, for members of the public, we're gonna go ahead and, and vote now instead of going into closed sessions first.
We're just flipping the-
We're just flipping the order, uh, that is shown on the revised agenda. So this matter is, uh, with regards to the settlement of the sample litigation. We're happy to re, to report that the parties have come to an agreement. There are updated materials being posted on the N R H A website with regard to this item. Um, there is a settlement agreement that is being made, uh, available as well uh, with regard to the resolution that has been, uh, reached to end the pending litigation with regard to the C N I implementation in the tidewater, tidewater gardens community and surrounding areas. So it, uh, we will, Chairman?
Yes. Uh, someone made a motion?
Showed it.
All right, the stand-up document.
And that's just calling for the vote now.
Where?
Commissioner Albert?
Aye.
Commissioner Benassi?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillard?
Aye.
Commissioner Purrier?
Aye.
Commissioner Gresham?
Aye.
Commissioner Musachi?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Can I, uh?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you, Phil?
Yes, sir.
Please, please.
Uh, Mr. Karen, if you can, if you can, if you can go to session?
Yes. Be it resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended the act to discuss the following matters which are specifically exempted from public disclosure by the closed section of the person viewed. Resolution convening a closed meeting on November eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen for consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding probable litigation requiring the submission of legal advice as of counsel as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven of the act. And number two personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, performance, salaries, or resignation of employees of the authority as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the act. May I have a motion?
So move.
Commissioner Benassi?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillard?
Aye.
Commissioner Purrier?
Aye.
Commissioner Gresham?
Aye.
Commissioner Musachi?
Aye.
All right, as per our usual, we'll take about five minutes, uh, reminding you not to speak of any N R H A business, and we'll reconvene, uh, in about five minutes in the closed session.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, the issues right there.
But I have to say, women always want shoes to back their hands, man. So you got shoes.
I use it.
I got an MRI on it. Nothing, nothing wrong with my, really.
Okay, well, we'll look for you Thursday, uh, by some post, if diagnosed. Hopefully not. Because I can, you know-
Are we back? Okay, back.
Yes.
Whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve D of the nineteen fifty Code of Virginia as amended, requires a certification by this authority that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, upon motion duly made and seconded, be it resolved that the authority hereby certifies that to the best of each commissioner's knowledge, number one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. And number two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the authority. May I have a motion?
So move.
A second fee?
Second.
Commissioner Benassi?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillard?
Aye.
Commissioner Purrier?
Aye.
Commissioner Gresham?
Aye.
Commissioner Musachi?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, as a final thing, I will allow public comment, uh, from virtual participants who may want to raise their hand to comment, or if they don't want to do that, they can use the chat feature to make their comment as well. And would you check the hallway, please?
Need no one in the lobby?
All right, do we have anyone to raise their hand?
We do not have any hands raised.
All right, any final comments? If not, I will go ahead and close the November meeting.
All right.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.